Let's start the meeting.
Right. To the flag. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing is the approval of May's meeting, the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections from anybody? Everybody's okay?
Move to accept him as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are accepted. Next on the business is a public hearing for Seth Anderson for 34 Arden Drive. Mr. Anderson here, or? Okay, step up to the mic there. Okay. Are you Seth Anderson?
I am.
Okay. Last month, we reviewed your application, found it complete, you know, so we set it for a public hearing. We viewed everything, and I went down, I took a look at it, and cooked a Saturday. I guess you were getting Optima. Optima put out on Saturday. There's an Optima guy there, yeah. I guess you're just trying to square off the house, is that what you're trying to do there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I understand.
Little wraparound porch and a little addition in the back.
Right. Well, we read, we read the, pretty much everything here.
You wrap around porch in the fourth season room?
Yeah, little sunroom off the bedroom.
Okay, this is pre-existing non-conforming, so you're gonna need two variances. You're looking for a, first one is, you're gonna do 174-foot square addition. So, your pre-existing is 1,200 square feet, so you permit to increase, you can have up to 25 percent, and that's less than 25 percent. So, that way, you need a permit for that. The second one is a proposed deck of 280 square feet, and you're, it's a 50-foot front yard setback is required, and you're looking for, put a 45, so you're looking for a five-foot variance?
Correct.
For that, okay, so there's two, those two variances you're looking for. Are there any questions for anybody on the board on this application? Does anybody in the audience would like to speak to this? Okay, now, I'm gonna go over the five factors. What the five factors are, it's the thing that we use to help us determine in our application, okay? And you answered the questions, we're gonna go over them.
I did, yep.
I'll go over them with you, as soon as I find them. Okay. Okay, got that, got that. Here we go. What possible detriment would the variance have on the nearby properties? And your answer basically was, proposed addition and deck will not hinder views of adjacent properties, porch exterior light will be dim, and only on when porch is being used. What impacts would the variance have in the character of the neighborhood? It's very common for houses in the areas to have front porches. Our house is pretty small, 1,200 square foot compared to others, so the proposed addition and porch would make it more compatible in size to adjacent houses. The overall appearance, curb appeal of the house would be greatly increased by the proposed addition porch. Number two, if you didn't get the variance, what else could you build, or what you want to accomplish your goal, how else? Front porch is currently designed, is only five foot wide, and this would have to be eliminated or shortened. The side porch would have to be smaller as well, which would, which not look symmetrically with the new addition. What code is your requirement, you're seeking a variant, you're seeking a 50-foot setback, you're asking for a five foot, five feet, I'm sorry. How's the impact of the variance have on the current physical and environmental conditions in the area? Impact is very minimal. Currently, there's a three-inch concrete apron around the perimeter of the house, and this will be replaced by a new addition in porch. The second system is in the backyard and will be not disturbed. No effect on traffic, drainage, or wetlands. No blasting is required. Is the variance requested a result of self-created hardship? We purchased the property December 21, 2020. We brought this property with the idea that we could do this addition and the front porch to give the house more character and make it our own. We were not aware that our plans for an addition and porch would encroach on a required setback. I understand that, but, you know, that's why, you gotta look. When you buy a piece of property or buy a house, you're gonna do something like that, you have to go through the town to look what the zoning, you know, for future, for your next home, I guess is what I'm trying to tell you, so you don't run into this problem again. Okay. Is there any questions for anybody on the board on this application? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on the application, on the two variances. Mr. Siston?
I vote to approve.
Okay. Mr. Lynn?
I'll vote to approve.
Okay. Mr. Frennan?
I vote to approve.
Paul?
I vote to approve as well.
And I vote to approve, so you got unanimous, okay, so you're all set. What you gotta do tomorrow is call the building department and deal, explain to you how to go forward.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Have a good day. Good night. All right. Next one. Diana Castro, 3 Ferris Drive Garrison. Appiclin is seeking a shoe. Okay, go over there, right by the mic.
I'm the architect. The architect. Do you have any?
Oh.
Diane Castro, I'm sorry, it's work. Okay. So, I think that works.
Okay, you're, who are you?
I'm the architect.
Your name?
Jan Assam, and this is the owner.
And I'm Diana.
You're Diana, okay, Diana.
Yes.
Great, great to meet you. Okay, tonight, what tonight says is for it to look at your application and see if we have all the information, okay? And if we have all the information, then we'll vote on to approve it, and then we would set it up for a public hearing.
Okay.
And a public hearing would be next month.
Yes, we understood that.
Okay? So, what you're trying to do here, basically, is seeking a variance to build a 478-square-foot addition to an 807-square-foot house.
Yes.
Consisting a non-conforming structure. The applicant is proposing a 35-foot front yard setback where 50 feet is required. Permit to expand 25 percent to a pre-exist, you need, first you're gonna need a permit to expand to 25 percent to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And I guess, you're gonna need a variance to exceed the 25, Adam?
Yeah, because the proposed floor area, I believe, is 59 percent.
Yes.
Right. Okay, what that is, what that is, under the town board, under the town zoning, any pre-existing non-conforming can be expanded up to 25 percent with a permit, okay? Now, if you wanna go beyond the 25 percent, you have to get a permit and a variance to go beyond the 25 percent, so that's the second item that you're gonna need. And the third item you're gonna need is a front yard setback. 50-foot is required, and you're proposing 35-foot setback. Okay, now, I went down, took a look at it, I'm standing in front of the house, you're intending to build on the left side of the house, right?
Right.
On the left side, okay. Now, the right side is your driveway, now, currently.
Yes, it's an electric gravel driveway. It's not an electric driveway.
No, a gravel thing.
Yes.
So, you're gonna put the driveway on the other, other side of the house?
Yes, we're going to apply for a curb cut.
Curb permit?
On the south side.
Okay, so tell us what you're trying to do here.
Okay, so, this is her existing building right here. This is the proposed two-story structure, which will be a garage on the first floor and living space on the second floor. Okay, so it's connected with a, kind of like a breezeway, and within that little breezeway is a staircase to the second floor. Now, currently, she parks right over here, and it's just gravel on dirt, basically, there's, there's no definition, there's nothing defining the driveway. So, you may ask why we didn't put the garage over here, but basically, the reason is because right along here is her septic field, and this, we believe this retaining wall was built to hold up the, you know, required amount of fill above the field. And the retaining wall is about four feet high here, three feet high here, and locating the garage over here, we would have to increase, go into the setback probably more than we would over here, but we actually could not locate it there. So, we went over to this side, and I realized that she would have to apply for a driveway, a new driveway location.
Okay.
So, so now, this corner of the, of the addition is where, we're increasing into the setback 15 feet, so therefore, we are behind the setback 35 feet.
Okay, and there's no fields there or anything else like that, right? Were you gonna put this new driveway?
Right, right here. This is the new driveway.
Okay, where's the septic field, correct?
Oh, the septic field is right along here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so they don't interfere with that as well.
Right.
I see.
And, and so, in addition to that, she has one acre, 1.14 acres.
Right.
But everything back here is ledge, going uphill. So, it was really an impossible situation, it was really the only place we could put the building.
Okay.
So, and I included some photos here for you to look at, and showing the front of the house, it's really quite an attractive site with a retaining wall here. And actually, the setback, I thought, was kind of odd in your town, because it's taken from the middle of the road instead of the edge of the road. And so, the, the retaining wall is here, and her property line is all the way back here.
Right.
So, you actually have 35 feet before you get to the middle of the, of the road here.
Right.
And as you can see here, there's quite a bit of lawn here, and that addition would be right along there, flush up against this gable end.
Okay.
I think that's all.
Go ahead.
This is, this is the retain, top of the retaining wall at the end that we could not build on, and that's her gravel driveway.
Okay. Now, you understand what happens, we, at this time, we would, if it's complete, if we have all the information, we'll, we'll mark it complete, and then the secretary would send out notices to all your neighbors, and so on and so forth, okay?
Yes, we're aware.
This is why anybody wants to know what's going on, or concerned, or, you know, wanna take a look at it, or something like that, they have the ability to do that, okay? Then you would have to come back here next month, which is July 12th, and, you know, but let's find out first if, if you got everything.
Okay.
Now, I pretty much don't see anything missing. Has anybody seen anything that we need for this application? No? Anyone?
And, excuse me, do we present again next month?
Yeah.
We do?
Because in cases, people here.
Oh, I see.
I understand, in cases, neighbors or something like that, they might wanna know what's going on, you know, you know, it's always a nosy neighbor, you know, I mean, everybody wants to know what's going on in the area, so. It may not be somebody, but, you know, you have to be prepared for it, okay? All right, just at this time, make a, take a vote of the application complete, Mr. Siston?
I say it's complete.
Mr. Lynn?
I'll second.
Second, oh, right, second. Vote, yeah. Yes?
Yes.
Paul? Okay, I think it's complete, too. So, you're set up for 7:30 on July 12th, that'll be a public hearing, okay? And at that public hearing, we'll listen to what anybody has to say, or so on and so forth, if there's any concerns, you can answer those questions, and then we'll take a vote.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night. July 12th, and there'll be no August meeting.
No.
No, no August meeting. You've worked too hard, you sure.
That's right.
Need to go on vacation. All right, let me put this one back.
I need to ask you a trick about that one.
All right. Next one is, let's see. Dana Raymond, it says 246 Hudson River Lane. Applicant is seeking a 10-foot variance where 30-foot is required to admit structure to be located 20 feet from the side lot yard. Hi. You have to go over here by the microphone.
Would you like please a one?
No, I think we have them, I think you pretty much gave us.
I can explain a little more.
Yeah, no, yeah, in case, I can put them there in case there's any questions, pretty much you gave it to us. Okay.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dana Raymond. I'm representing our property, this is my husband Kevin with the red shirt, and this is Michael Legori, who's here if there are any technical questions, he, Michael, is our land use consultant, so he could answer them for you.
Why is he, I'm sorry? He's your?
Michael Legori.
And what'd you do?
I'm attorney.
Oh, you're attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
So, I'm here to answer any questions that you have in regards to the application.
Right, what I'm looking at is, I read the Code Enforcement Office's denial letter. It says, "Post issuance of a building permit on a conforming lot, you are requesting to construct within 20 feet of the south property line with 30 feet is required. This request does not comply with the dimensional table in town of Phillips Town. Further, the current construction permit was issued subject to the approval of a site plan review by the conservation board. The current proposal will not comply with that approval. Therefore, you need to reapply to the conservation board to ask to amend that approval as well. I am not able to honor your request at this time and must deny your request." I, I'm just trying to figure this out, it looks like there's two foundations there, right? You already have the foundation for the house, and the second foundation is for this other structure?
That's also part of the house.
That's also there, and that's gonna be a two-story structure?
Yes.
Okay. What's in that two-story structure, like, what's on the first floor?
My studio.
Your studio, what's on the second floor?
My husband's studio.
Is there a bathroom there, or anything inside?
There is a bathroom.
Okay. See, what, what I'm missing here is, I see you put it, thing of hand drawing of two, you have two, four, and six, it's like that, but, don't you actually have the actual plans that you gave to the building department, you know?
You have all of them.
Yeah. We don't have them, see?
Yes, oh.
Well.
You don't have them.
What, she, I don't know what the second story, the two-story structure looks like, is what I'm trying to say.
It's in the plans.
It's in the plans?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you giving me a front view and a back view of that, of it all? All I see is, huh?
You should have.
I should have everything? Okay.
Your plan is completely based on A100, A101.
Right.
Is the first floor plan A102?
Okay, what I'm looking at, let me say, wait, I'm trying to figure. This, this is like hand drawn, right?
I'm talking about these.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm talking about this, okay? This is like hand drawn, right? Okay. Do you have anything that shows that visually, or, you know, regular plans, you know what I'm trying to say, like a front group view? Okay, good, that's what I'm talking about. That's in here, that's in the package?
Yes.
Okay. The foundation's already there, right, for the second building?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask why you wanna move it?
Absolutely.
So, we bought the properties in 2018, and we began to design the house, I began to design the house. The property looks very big, but it has a lot of constraints. To the east, there's a lot of bedrock. To the north, there was a house on there that was torn down. We didn't wanna put anything on that property, we were just concerned about it, there was litigation, and that big house came down. We could have moved further to the west, but we didn't wanna block our neighbor's view. We have one neighbor, but if we moved further west, we would block three views. So, we're in this, this tight constraint here. We, we're fully permitted, we're under construction, and we came, and we halted the, the work on the smaller portion of the house, okay? Because when we did the excavation, well, before that, we had, we had the geotechnical, we had the borings, our structural engineer, our civil engineer, and our architect, from all of the data that we compiled, it was to us clear that we were gonna be able to have a basement. So, once excavation happened, we're sitting on a huge amount of bedrock, which, when you go to the site, you'll see. It's all about the bedrock, and the bedrock was so close to the surface that we had to, not only don't we have a basement now, but we don't have, we didn't have a functional crawl space even for the mechanicals, so we have to raise the house a foot just to have a functional crawl space. So, we originally designed the basement, knowing we couldn't have a large portion of the basement, but we had 866 square feet that everyone felt confident we would have. What we have in reality is 200 and change. So, that's a difficulty for us, we're losing square footage for things that we really need in terms of the reverse osmosis system, because we're on a well down there, I think you're very familiar with the lane, and so, when you water your, when you water the lawn, if I watered this, it would turn orange. It turns everything orange in the house, in the faucets, in the sink, et cetera. So, we're getting the RO system that has, it's, it's a 12-part system, has 12 components. Then we have our mechanicals, and then there's, for us, we have nothing, we have no room. So, because of this, and because of how we've seen the bedrock and the pattern of the bedrock with the, with the excavation, we all felt that if we moved 10 feet to the south, we have a possibility of having some basement, okay? We really need the basement space.
But you don't know it for sure.
No, we're taking a big gamble.
Right.
We're taking a big gamble, and that aerial that I brought tonight was for a different reason, but you could see.
I was down there, I took a look at it.
That we stayed on hold.
Right.
Yeah.
I looked at it, I took a look at it. Now, the foundation is already there, correct?
Yes, it is, and it's going to cost us money to move it.
Excuse me, if you could step up to the mic a little?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the foundation is there.
Ken, is this better?
So, the foundation is there, and you could build it. I'm just, let me ask you, it could be built?
It could be built without a basement.
Okay.
We're losing 70 percent of our basement area.
How, you put, I'm saying, without a basement, you put the foundation in, did you know that when they poured the foundation, that you couldn't have a basement?
They went really quick, Molt, they went very quick, and I wasn't up there, you know, I'm not the project manager on the site, by the time I got to the site and I saw it, and Kevin saw it, we thought long and hard, and we said, we're going to, we're gonna take a risk, and we're gonna come, and we're going to ask for a 10-foot side yard variance from you.
Right.
Does anybody down there have basements?
Yes.
Do you know how many?
Number 22, which is completely in the flood zone, has a full basement.
22 has?
Yes, 22 has a full basement.
You can't go two.
Mr. Brackey has a basement.
I don't know how, I don't know how deep you could go with the river there.
Let me tell you, I think it's, but, but they have it, and during Hurricane Sandy, what happened was, because Jay Brennan built it, and he built it so well, and he built it sealed tight, so when Hurricane Sandy came in, it came in through the ground, through the door, down, filled up the basement, and the foundation, being wood frame, popped off because of the pressure. It then went back down. Brackey has a basement, and 22 has a basement, yeah, there are basements. And we're not in the flood zone, so we can have a basement.
You're not in the flood zone?
No.
Oh, you're higher up there?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I look at your plans on the south side of this structure, it's gonna be in there, it's gonna be a studio, is it gonna be a bathroom there, or anything like that, or?
Bathroom, yeah.
A bathroom, is your bedroom in there, or anything else like that, or?
No.
No, okay. On the south side of the structure, you have three heat pumps, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And a generator?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, anytime they're operating, they do make noise, I mean, you know, heat pumps, you know, make noise, so I'm just concerned about the neighbor, because you're moving, gonna take 10-foot closer, could you put those heat pumps on the other side of the building?
Well.
And you're tearing up the foundation, as it is.
Our neighbors know everything that we're doing.
Right.
We shared everything with them.
Right.
We wrote them a letter about, that we were building before we told anyone else, we told everyone on the lane, we shared our plans with them, and they're, they're, they're not, they're remaining neutral on this, so they, they have plans, and believe me, they know everything that we're doing.
Right, no, I, I understand, and I'm not saying, but they not.
The other side is, the other side would be tough.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, you stopped construction, is that what you did?
We did.
Not on the main house, just on this?
Just on that.
Just on this.
Just so that it's clear.
You have to get, you're gonna have to get up here and identify yourself. Can you tell who you are? I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's, it's actually one house.
Your name, I'm sorry.
Michael Legori, I'm an attorney at Hogan and Rossi.
Right.
So.
It has to be what?
It, it's one house.
It's two, two, two different foundations?
Understood, but it's, it's one house, it'll be connected after, the, the construction involves the connection of the two structures, so that, the studio, would, would.
Where's the connection here?
It'll be connected, there'll be a cement connection in the foundation that has not yet been poured, so you haven't seen that on site.
Right.
And then it'll also be connected by decking, and it's considered by the building department to be one structure, and, and that's very important, because we'd be having a much different conversation.
I don't see any decking in this thing here.
It, it's on the construction plans.
I see a fence. I don't see decking. Is it on the plans?
No.
I do. Could you show me the decking?
You lift it up? Let me, I'm gonna raise the jacket.
That's the framing for the decking right there.
This is the framing for the decking, and that's what connects this structure to this structure, but there's also what isn't poured, so you went out to the site, you saw the foundation for this.
Correct.
You saw the foundation for this.
Correct.
But there will also be concrete foundation connecting it that has not yet been poured, and that's why.
Okay. Oh, that's how you make it a one building?
That's how, yeah, exactly.
Otherwise, you'd have a problem.
The concrete, the concrete makes it one building?
And the decking together, so under the code, as long as the building.
A deck makes it, hold on, a deck makes it a one building?
Under the zoning code, it is not an accessory structure because it is physically connected. And so, if you had a garage and a breezeway, you have one house by virtue of that connection, but here, further than just the decking, there is concrete foundation that would be poured that would connect it.
A wall, you got a concrete wall.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I just wanted to be clear on that, because I didn't wanna, I risked the fear of going down the road of having a discussion about an accessory structure and that needing variances, when that's not the case.
Right.
We worked that out with the building department in the design process to make sure that, that we were consistent with the code.
Right.
One question. Isn't, isn't it required that new structures be, be built above the 100-year flood?
You could, you could build within the flood plain, provided that your foundation achieves a certain elevation, so FEMA sets.
Isn't, isn't it required that new structures be, be built above the hundred-year flood?
You could, you could build within the flood plain, provided that your foundation achieves a certain elevation. So FEMA sets.
It had to be above the hundred-foot flood. You know, the living area, you can have structure below it, but had, must have blowout walls.
We're not in the flood zone. Our house is not in the flood zone.
Of course you're in the flood zone. That place floods all the time.
We, we have more elevation than other properties on the lane.
It's on the FEMA map, not in the flood zone.
It's underwater.
We're not in the flood zone.
One last question, you're talking about the bedrock. Is there any other place? I see there's a lot of other room on, on the property. Like, if you went to the west, to the north side of the building, I say, could you put it there?
Yes.
I'd like to speak to that, please.
Sure.
We didn't do it for two reasons. The first one, we were, we, we, we were very timid, because there was a house that was put there, and it was taken down. And those people, you know, those people left town.
The reason the house was taken down, the reason the house was taken down was because they built it too high.
Well, you know, it was just something that we didn't, we didn't like hearing, but there's a, there's a bigger, there's a bigger reason. Is that when we live further down the lane, we heard the trains and we love the trains. When we live, when we came to this property, what we didn't realize is, is where pedestrians cross and where the cars cross. So, the train, the train conductors hold on to the horn the whole time, and then this last year, there was a federal mandate to install two poles with louds, with, with speakers. Okay? So, when the crossing guards, now there's crossing guards that make noise every time a train goes by, and then when the train stops, which it started to do again, it stopped for a while, you know, during COVID, it stays on continually, the whole entire time. That's one reason. It's, we have a fantastic property. We also have a few hardships, because we have this fantastic property. The other one being is that there's a privacy factor. People hang out. When we first bought this property, people, we have two chairs out at the point, and there were six kids out there. Like, I think they were having a party. And when we were in the city, we looked on the cameras, and there was a couple with a bottle of wine. I mean, I don't blame them, but people knock on our door, they ask us things, which I don't mind. They, they ask for water. In fact, when we put up the new fence, I want to put a bench in front of it for the hikers. But the interface is, is very uncomfortable, and we didn't want our house to be right there, you know, and I, I believe you've all been to the lane and you, you, you know.
Right.
I would ask you to look at that. So, that's why we didn't go there, and we didn't go to the west, because we would block people's views. And we didn't want to do that.
All right, I, I just, you know, I just, the, the board's job is to grant a variance pre-need, and, you know, it, it's hardship and so on and so forth, okay? What, make, a little confused here is, you have your foundation there. You can build, you can start building tomorrow. And as far as the basement goes, there's no guarantee if you move ten feet that you're going to be able to put a basement in.
It's, it's a gamble, but we need a basement.
But there's no guarantee. I'm trying to say, so, you know, I, I don't see, I, you, you can move it ten feet closer, and all it's going to, all it's going to be is the same issue. You don't know that. It could be the same problem, bedrock.
It's more likely, because.
Why?
They did take down the house on, on Six Hudson River Lane, so we're not, we're not totally blind, in, in the sense of what, what, you know, knowledge of what's in the ground. So, I, I, I just want to clarify that, that one point. So, this property, and to just kind of go back to the beginning, was two Hudson River Lane, four Hudson River Lane, six Hudson.
Right, right.
And so, when the property was acquired, as part of the, the process to, to design and build this house, we merged those three parcels into one parcel.
It's two. What, two Hudson River Lanes, the permit is for, two?
That's, that's right. Now, it's just two Hudson River Lane.
Right.
And, and obviously, you guys are very familiar with your code. The way the code reads is that we're non-conforming, we're in a five-acre zoning district, which, I don't know about you guys, but it, it's very odd to me that Hudson River Lane is in a five-acre zone, because it seems like a variance request is before you're bored virtually every couple of months for a house there. You know, it's common knowledge that these properties are small.
Right.
But if, if our total acreage was, was under an acre, we would automatically be entitled to the twenty-foot setback, because that's how the code reads. The code says, any lot under forty thousand square feet in a non-conforming zone has a twenty-foot side yard.
Right.
And that's, that's based on a calculation, and that calculation says that no more than twenty-five percent of your lot, if covered by wetlands or watercourses, can be allocated towards your total acreage. So, in, in our case, when you deduct out the, the land that's submerged, because we own into, into the Hudson River, just like many of the other properties across the lane, it's covered by the Hudson River. When we do that calculation, we just fall slightly over the one-acre mark. And if we fell under it, we, we wouldn't be here for a variance. We'd just be entitled to get our building permit for the revision that we want to make. But, but back to the initial point, which was, are you taking a gamble? Yeah, we are taking a gamble, but we also did take down four Hudson River Lane and six Hudson River Lane. That basement area, you know, we, we do know what is there from what we took out, so it isn't that big of a risk.
Well.
So, we're not really going in blind. We know we're going to get basement.
All right, if you knew what was there when you take it out, why didn't you come first before you put this foundation?
Because.
Go ahead.
Like I said, it's, it's the footings, it's not the foundation, which you'll see. The foundation is poured for the main house, the main part of the house. Because they, they did it, and we're not up here, we don't live here now, and we didn't see it. Once we saw it, we realized that we, we needed to try to do this, you know, and if I could speak to the positive things that we're doing, we're eliminating, may I do that?
I'm sorry?
May I speak to some of the other kind of details of the prop, the project? Okay, we could have built a house three times this size. It would not fit contextually on Hudson River Lane. We're taking three properties, and we're eliminating the, the, the opportunity ever again to have three homes, three septic systems, and three wells. We're removing two failing septic systems, two failing wells. The last person actually cut off the well in order to put a piece of bluestone over it, okay? We're using a, a septic system with a peat that really intrigued the conservation board, so we're doing something state-of-the-art. We're reducing the density, we're reducing the traffic, and our house is eleven feet, eleven inches high. The small portion, that house is only eight hundred and ninety-nine square feet, and it's twenty-four feet high. It's lower than my neighbor's house. And, you know, we're, we're having a small, yeah, but it's, it's this wide, it's thirteen feet wide, you know.
I'm saying, streetwise, you have, the one-story is your house, then you have a two-story structure.
Yeah, we have two-story, and we'll have trees and, and all that. It's also eight hundred and ninety-nine square feet, and the house that was next to the Sullivans before was sixteen hundred square feet.
Right.
And with the thirty-foot setback that we have now, that was approved, the houses are, are forty feet apart, okay? Because there's.
Yeah, not, maybe your foundation for your house, but not, not this foundation.
The, the, this foundation that's there.
I mean, this, this footing for this house, you're saying that's forty feet?
Well, it's thirty feet from the property line.
Right.
And there's another ten feet to the Sullivan's house, so forty feet between houses. If we have a twenty-foot setback, they still have thirty feet between their home. Twenty feet and ten, and before, they were on, they were on top of each other with the house, that they lived that way for three and a half decades.
Right.
And it was, it was twenty feet between the houses, and they had driveways side by side. We're also eliminating the asphalt. We, we're not going to have asphalt driveways. Our, our, our non-permeable square feet are going down almost two thou, more than two thousand square feet. You know, and I think we're, we're creating a light footprint.
Okay.
And the other thing, I can't, I can't say for sure, because I don't know yet, but I believe, because the road is up here and we have a knoll and we go down, that our neighbors who are driving by are now going to be able to have a new vista of the Hudson River. I mean, eleven, you know, we have a twelve-foot high, we have a twelve-foot high house.
Well, they're not going to have, they're not going to have the view of the two-story, that's for sure.
But they don't need to have that view. It's like, they don't live there.
I, I'm trying to say, yeah. I, I, I understand what you're saying, and all I'm just trying to say is that it, it was approved, and it was permitted, and the construction was started, and I, I just, I find, just find it a little difficult why you, you're going to gamble. Now, if you go over ten-foot more and you find bedrock, do you want to go over ten-foot more?
No.
You know what I'm trying, well, you don't know that. You know what I'm trying to say? You come here now, so what, what, there's nothing for you to stop you, come back again.
I think that to, to, to look at the, how important this is to my husband and I, to stop construction, and it's going to cost us over twenty-five thousand dollars to move the footings and have the excavation. It's important to us, and we're not creating any, any negative impact on our lane.
Well, the negative impact to me would be a neighboring house, okay? Because what, what concerns me is that on the south side of this structure, you have, now, I guess that's the heating for all, for both houses, and I say both houses, I know it's not both houses, but both sections, right? The, the three heating units you have, right? It's going to do everything.
Yes.
Okay. And you're going to have a generator there, right?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Well, I'm trying to say, if, if you're going to use it, it is, it's a little noisy. Now, you're moving it closer to a neighboring property. Is that necessary?
Well, I hear the Sullivan's generator when it goes off, and actually, we all know that that's when the, the, the electricity goes off down there. Because everyone's generators are loud.
No, no, not necessarily. I'm just trying to say, you know, moving it closer to them, you know, you understand what I'm trying to say?
I do, but those structures are allowed to go up to the five-foot mark, regardless of whether or not we get a variance. So, if we wanted to put them at the five-foot mark, we could just put them there without coming to the zoning board. So, that's very important. So, your, your concern is, is that if you grant the variance, those accessory structures, those, that, those utilities move closer?
Right.
Right, okay. We could submit a plan to the building department that puts them five-foot from the, the property boundary.
Okay.
And get a building permit.
Right.
Totally legitimate, lawful, according to your code, so.
But you might lower your chances.
Excuse me?
You might lower your chances.
Of doing what?
Getting variance.
Oh, no, no, we would never do it on purpose. The point is, is that your code allows that to happen. So, when you contemplate the effect.
I hear what you're saying.
That's my point, okay? So, my, my next point is, is that the zoning board can, can, you know, require reasonable conditions to mitigate impacts. So, if we need to screen it in some way to mitigate noise.
Okay, we'll leave that probably for a public hearing, because we'll probably, that'll probably be, I don't know if anybody's going to.
But, you know, I, I want to, I'm sorry.
I, I, I do like the fact that you are reducing the, I mean, you're increasing the, the space between you and your neighbor by ten feet.
Decrease.
No, increase.
Decrease.
They're, they're.
I'm moving ten feet closer to them.
No, I, but, yeah, but they, they, previously, they were twenty feet. The, the neighbor was twenty feet away from this property, and now they're going to be thirty feet. So, that's a plus.
It is. The, the house that was on Six Hudson River Lane that was next to Sullivan, went all the way to the ten-foot mark for a portion of that house. And the, the remaining part of it was at the twenty-foot mark. So, we're removing, you know, obviously, we started at thirty feet, but by the removal of that structure, we've pulled back that ten-foot, you know, encroachment that had been there for, for decades. So, the end result, even with the entirety at twenty feet, is still better than what was there before.
I also want to ask, you have two studios in the, in the two-story building. What kind of studios are they?
My architecture and painting studio, and my husband is a martial artist, and he, he practices every, every day. And he's always wanted his own dojo.
Okay.
And I think he deserves to have one.
All right, I guess, I guess, we, we can, you know, we can discuss more of it at the, at the public hearing, so I guess tonight is just a thing, do we have all the information? For, to determine if this is complete, the application. Anybody have any, any other questions? Anybody, any other board members? All right, I guess, take a vote on the application, it was complete. Mr. Stone?
Uh, yes, yes.
Complete, it's complete?
My vote is complete.
Not complete?
I vote.
Complete, okay. All right, so we'll set up your public hearing for July twelfth.
Thank you so much. And what I gave you, the aerial photograph, I did that, because when you go to the site, our contractors recently moved a fence, our fence, we have a construction fence. And I just wanted to show you where the property line is between us and our neighbors. It's like right down below of the driveways that are side by side, not by the fence, because that would be a detriment to, you know, your evaluation of our trust.
Okay.
One, one thing I would suggest for next month, I know there was some talk about conditions and possible measures to be taken to mitigate the impact of the decreased side yard. If you could speak to that, perhaps if you want to make some of your own suggestions on conditions that might be acceptable to you, so the board can have a dialogue with you about that, as opposed to the board unilaterally imposing a condition, if they're so inclined, without any input or ideas from the applicant, I just think it would be a good idea to, to speak to that.
What I could all.
I know you're talking about the north side. It would be, for the board's convenience, it would be easier to put it on the north side. You know, your, your structure.
Oh, you mean the, the auxiliary equipment?
Where the old house used to be. I know, you're making faces, but I'm just trying to say, you know, I can see your face, but I'm just trying to tell you, you know, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just trying to say that, because then, you don't need a variance, correct?
The other thing we could do, the only other thing we could do, is move the annex closer to the west, and we know there's no bedrock down there. But I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that to, to, to the neighbors. We're all paying to be there, to, to, to enjoy the view and the quirkiness of the lane, and I don't want to take it away. What I would respectfully request is you just spend a few times over in that corner, and you tell me if you still feel the same way, if you would want your house there.
Right.
It's really noisy.
I spent, I spent some time there the other day, and I heard the trains come by, you know, you know the trains have been there a long time, you owned the property down there, so the trains are nothing new.
I don't love the cars.
And the bells, the bells are the bells. You're going to hear them in your house, right? You know, you're going to hear the bell in your house, I guess, if you're going to hear it anywhere. That's, unless you talk to the MTA about that, you want to give them a lower the bell.
I tried. I, they, it's not, it's federal. Can't do it.
Can't do it. Can't do that, so.
I'm sure there are other people that are having the same issues in other areas where you walk across the.
Well, I'm trying to say, there are other ways for you to do this, and not in your opinion, but that's up to the board. Okay? So, we'll set it for public hearing, July twelfth. I'd like to go back with some other kind of, you know, different ideas, and if possible, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, what do we have next? Twenty-eight thirty, Hudson River Lane. Hold on a second, let me get my things here. All right, I got a, I guess last month, we were talking about this, the thing we were, a couple of things we're looking for. Looking for, first of all, what is the square footage of this house? We asked that last month, we didn't, we didn't have the answer. Give us, can you give us the answer now?
So, the, the square footage of the house, let me.
Oh, I'm sorry, one thing I forgot. Are you, you're still going to have to talk to the conservation board?
Oh, yes, they, they, they're fully aware.
Well, aware is one thing. I need a letter from them.
No, I know.
Okay.
One second.
A, a letter from the conservation board?
So, the conservation board meeting, we're submitting to the conservation board, okay?
Okay.
But that meeting isn't until the day after the next zoning board meeting, and that would push us out until August before we'd be approved.
Oh, next month, you mean? It's not till after?
It's not, no, no. So, we're not, we didn't get in front of that time.
Okay.
But their, their, obviously, their approval isn't.
Well, that would be a condition, you understand that?
Absolutely.
Okay, fine, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, the total square footage for the house is four thousand eight hundred and forty-six square feet?
Four thousand.
Eight hundred and forty-six.
Eight hundred and forty-six square feet.
And the garage.
Is that the, the proposed new house?
Um, sorry.
I got different figures in there, so that's what I'm trying to say. This is what we had.
There's also the garage space, too. So, the garage is nine oh three, for a total of five seventy-four nine.
Five seventy-four, I'm sorry, what?
Five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine.
Five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet. And that includes the garage?
Yes.
Okay. What is the square footage of the garage?
Nine oh three.
Nine hundred and fifty?
Nine oh three. Adam, is that the number that you got from D today?
Yeah, the, the, the new house plus the new garage will have a floor area of five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, now, you sent us another plan, another, I got, I got it in the mail from the secretary this week. What is that?
So, that's with the updated numbers.
With the updated numbers?
Yes.
That's what it is, okay. And I got an email here from our, tonight's more attorney. He spoke with Ron Gaynor. Ron Gaynor is the planning board engineer. And you, I guess, and it appears that the applicant needs four items from his EBA. What you need is a special permit. Total area for existing houses, garages on thirty and twenty-eight is four thousand six hundred and thirty-two. So, that's another figure, so I don't quite understand that. Adam?
No, the, the revised figure, that, that figure, as I understand it, jumping if I'm wrong, was using outdoor deck area. But that's not within the definition of floor area in the code. So, the existing structures have, according to the architect, have a floor area of three thousand six hundred and seventy-three square feet. And with the taking down of the existing structures and putting up a single house and a garage, that's going to have a total floor area of five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet. So, they will need a special permit in a variance, because it represents an increase in a non-conforming structure of greater than twenty-five percent of floor area.
Email, let's see, what is this? What email I got tonight says, no, fine.
Right, no, it's, the percentage, percent increase is fifty-six point five percent.
Okay, then what is this, twenty-four?
That's based on the former numbers of floor area.
Okay. So, there is a special permit and a variance for the lower twenty-five percent?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so a special permit variance of over twenty-five percent. Uh, let's see, what else? With the proposed new house, there will be a side yard setback on the south side of the new house of eighteen feet, nine inches. The existing side yard setback on the south side, Thirty Hudson River Lane, is nineteen feet, three inches. So, the decrease in the side yard setback on the south side will be six inches. A thirty-foot setback is required. Are we correct on that? Adam, is that right?
That's my understanding. Just with the new construction on the south side, right? Just with the new construction on the south side, right, adjacent to what was the old 30 Hudson River Lane, you're proposing a side yard setback of 18 feet, 9 inches.
Right. Yeah.
And on the north side, going further up the Hudson, it's going to be a side yard setback of 6 feet, which is about 6 inches larger than the former side yard setback on the north.
Right.
And then the...
All right. Let me ask a question on this one here. On the area variance, the proposed new house, there will be a side yard setback on the north side of the house, 6 feet. Existing yard setback is the north side is 28 Hudson River Lane is 5 foot, 6 inches. So, the side yard setback on the north will be 6 inches greater. Out of 57 square, 5,700 square foot house, you can't knock off 6 inches?
We're giving you 6 inches.
Huh?
We're giving you 6 inches.
On one side.
On the north, it will be greater than previously. It says it will be greater. So, the side yard setback on the north will be 6 inches greater than previously.
We can certainly give you 6 inches.
There was a side yard setback there previously.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to say, 5,700 square feet, I just sound ridiculous, and 6 inches.
It was 5 foot, 6. We're now increasing it to 6 feet. So, we're giving up 6 inches.
6 inches.
It's right here in the plans.
Here's what I'm reading here from the attorney. So, let's...
Okay.
We're saying that existing side yard setback...
Yeah.
Okay, is 5 foot, 6 inches. So, the side yard setback on the north will be 6 inches greater than previously.
Right.
Correct?
North will be 6 inches greater than previously.
Okay. So, it asks for 6 inches more than it was there before.
No. The setback currently is 5 foot, 6. We're making it 6 feet.
Isn't that more?
It's more. It's not less.
It's the other side of the...
The house will be pulled back from the side yard an additional 6 inches.
Okay.
It's cushioned.
I'm reading it wrong. Okay. Third variance, the proposed new house, the impervious surface coverage will be increased from 35.4% to 38.5%. An increase of 3.1%. Is that correct?
Um, sorry. Impervious coverage is going from 20.2 to 20.3. So, it's an increase of 0.1. Proposed combined lot impervious coverage. I'm sorry. That's including land underwater. Sorry. So, we're going from impervious coverage calc excluding land underwater, right? So, just the dry land. It's going from 38.4, the existing of the two lots, to 38.5. So, again, still 0.1 increase.
3.1% increase.
It's a 0.1. 0.1.
Okay.
That I would need clarification on because my understanding was, it's right now, it's 35.4%.
So, these were numbers that Dee from my office had corrected, and she had spoken to you about it today. She called to clarify to you, and she brought drawings for tonight for you to clarify this because we caught an error in our calculations.
Well, I'm not going to clarify.
Okay.
So, yeah, so just the question simply is, just to...
Right.
I understand that there was a... You adjusted the calculations because of a floor area.
Right.
You were taking into account certain stuff that shouldn't have been incorporated into floor area.
Correct.
So, the question simply is, with the new structures...
Yeah.
The impervious surface coverage is going to be 38.5%.
Correct.
And the old structures, just if you could give a read out, what was the impervious?
38.4. And I... This is to... Let me clarify, too, where this is coming from. We're not playing a shell game here. It's just recall, we had the old survey, and we have a new survey that shows all the concrete pads that are existing on the site. Many of them were taken out. So, there are a lot of pieces on the site that's in the site survey that you should have in your packet. I'll just point to it now. The, you know, the surveys from Beatty and Watson, the individual lots show the various concrete pads that were in the earlier survey. So, there's a lot of hardscape that's currently on site that we're removing. So, we're reducing much of the impervious site and putting back just, you know, a little bit more than what was there. So, it's newer information since the last meeting.
So, the increase in impervious surface coverage is simply 0.1%, right?
0.1%. 0.1%. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Then you're going to need number four, area variance with proposed new house, a front yard setback of 19 six inches is proposed. The existing front yard setback for the two lots are 23 feet, 1 inch for 28 Hudson River Lane and 21 feet, 1 inch for 30 Hudson River Lane. So, the applicant's decreasing front yard setback by up to about 3 and 1/2 feet. The minimum front yard setback is only 60 feet. Is that correct?
The new front yard setback... Sorry. So, the proposed front yard setback... Let me just catch up here. Okay. Front yard setback required is 60. The existing on one lot is 23.1, on the other lot is 21 foot, 1, and the proposed is 19 foot, 6. So, it's... We're requesting a variance of 40 feet, 6 inches. Is that correct, Adam?
Correct, but you're changing the existing setback front yard by about 3 and 1/2 feet.
Right.
Okay.
And that's to make the garage work.
Okay.
By how much on this side?
About 3 and 1/2 feet.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this at this point?
I don't know if you can answer this, but what is the normal front yard setback for the adjoining houses?
Like the average?
Yeah.
It's... I would say it's pretty consistent. You know, it's generally consistent throughout. I mean, the neighbors immediately to the north, they're much closer, actually. Probably looks like about 5 feet on the house. The garage is in about the same location as the current garage. So, it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay. All I'm just trying to do is get the exact figures because if we were to give you, you know, the variances, we want to make sure that the figures and feet are right.
Of course.
You build, and it's 6 inches over or something like that, then you have to take it down.
Right.
So, we're not looking for that.
We're not going there.
We already had a house taken down here before, years ago, okay? So, we're not looking to take anything down. Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Vote on the application being complete. Mr. Stone?
I vote that it's complete.
That it's complete?
I vote it's complete.
Complete?
I vote it's complete.
Follow?
It's complete.
And I say it's complete. Okay. So, you're set for a public hearing July 12th.
Great. Thank you.
What is it for July?
I'm sorry?
It's still off for July 12th?
Off for July... Yeah, July 12th. And of course, the secretary will send out letters to the neighbors and everything else like that. So, there'll be a lot of neighbors that will know what's going on because there'll be two going on July 12th. So, a lot of neighbors will be up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Any new business, old business? Any motions?
My second.
All seats are adjourned. Second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.